It's sharp nine o'clock ladies and gentlemen. Our session will now commence, shall we all rise?
Okay, good morning to all of you. So, to... For the invocation, may I request Pastor Jennifer Haranilla of the New Hope Community Church under Carmo Hope.
Praise God, it is privilege for us. Makaduol kita sa Ginoo para magabi i akal kapuntagon. Sa tanang ka na higugma sa Ginoo atong ibutan atong kasing-kasing diya sa tungroghan. Gods remind us this morning in the book of March chapter 12 verse 30 to 31, shall love the Lord your God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your mind and with all your strength. Let us pray. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, to the triune God who made the heaven and earth, the almighty, loving Father, we come before you this morning with a grateful heart acknowledging to your word says in the book of Psalms 127 verse 1, "Unless the Lord build the house, the builders live in vain." As we begin this Sangguningang Bayan session, Lord, we humbly seek your wisdom, guidance, and divine presence in all deliberations. Lord, you remind us in your word in Proverbs chapter 14 verse 34, righteous exalt nations that every, may every decision we make reflect integrity, fairness, and all genuine desires to serve our people. Help us to sit aside our personal interests and work together with unity, compassion, and respect to our fellow colleagues. Lord, grant us the courage to do what is right, the clarity to see what is best for our community in Palomolo, and the humility to listen to one another. May the plans we craft bring peace, development, and hope to the constituent win. We are called to be served, Lord. Bless and anoint our leaders, our municipality and councilors, and every family represent here today. Let your people rest upon our word, and may everything we accomplish bring honor to your name, oh God. We entrust this entire session to you, oh Lord, for your words remind us in the book of Proverbs chapter 3 verse 6, "In all your ways acknowledge him, and he shall direct your path." This we pray in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen and amen.
So, thank you very much Pastor. So, at this time, I now declare this 28th relation to order. So...
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
So, may I call Honorable John Lumayag for the registration of the panunupas sa katapatan ng Watawan. Ako'y nanunupas ang panunupas sa Watawan.
Kung iyan ang nasa angrotabo, taglaya ang isang dugol ang pinipido. Ibat-ibang vivo, pinanggalihan-lihan lang sa pataguyan na matibay na mamamayan. Wala pong puro, wala siyang ibigay, at sa malam na siya. Ang sanu ay sa loya bigla. Tayo lang, parabila na lumpay. Sama-sama sa pataguyan na bayan, aking ang putina magandang pinapunta. Tayo ay magkaisa sa kibikas at ibo, para sa bayan sa ato.
Na paya pang tahanan, ito'y sa umiyaya. Ikas na mayaman ang pahinay masagana. Mayang pugay ang bawat lumikan na naumpay. Sa hirap at dinhawa kami tagapal. Palomolo pang tahanan na kayamanan, lalumpag yamanin, kultura tarangalan. Kawakka may pagtebay na tinatumpulan. Ipagbunyit isisigas sa buong sanibutan. Palomolo pang tahanan na manggagawa. Palomolo pang tahanan na mangmabayalin. Masneim ka tutomo at mga kristyalo, tabi't pisig sa pagunlad ang siya minimiti. Ipagbunyit bawat ang pa, taas mo. Iwagay ba ang ino, taliguan. Bawat pagtao, itumpuhan. Palomolo pang tahanan na kayamanan, lalumpag yamanin, kultura tarangalan. Kawakka may pagtebay na tinatumpulan. Ipagbunyit isisigas sa buong sanibutan. Ipagbunyit isisigas sa buong sanibutan.
Honorable Baitos, can I lead the councilor group?
Hello councilors, please take your time together. I am Honorable John Lumayag. I make the general without initial assistance, but we long for the future of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe our service of itself is very critical to these issues. And as we create the public service of our citizens, we will fight to provide them with a better life. That should be true for my citizens too.
So, I'll need to take your say. Say. For the real call.
Only our Vice Mayor and regular Presiding Officer is absent this morning, Mr. Presiding. On official business, attending the Vice Mayor's League Convention in Manila. The national convention of the Vice Mayor's League of the Philippines in Manila. And pursuant to that event, our Vice Mayor issued a memorandum order to Honorable Ilja Sargiu Hobero, Sangguningang Bayan member, designating Councilor Hobero as the OIC Vice Mayor from November 25 to 27 until the return of our Vice Mayor. So, Councilor or Vice Mayor Carlos is on official business in Manila, and currently the designated OIC Vice Mayor is Councilor Hobero.
Okay to comply in our internal roles. May I request somebody to move for the temporary Presiding Officer. Yes, Honorable...
Good morning everyone. It is an honor to be nominating the acting Vice Mayor, Honorable Ilja Sargiu Hobero, to be our temporary Presiding Officer in this session.
Okay, since it was justified that I will be proceeding our session, so next subject matter sec.
For the privilege hour and... For the reading and consideration of our previous minutes, we have the minutes of the 19th Regular Session held at the SB Session Hall on November 18, 2025.
Okay, can I review our previous minutes, the 19th Regular Session? If you have some comment, can I raise your hand? If there's none, the minutes of the 19th Regular Session, the 28th Sangguningang Bayan is served by approved. Please say, proceed, sir.
And again, for the privilege hour and our question hour, this morning we'll be awarding resolutions of commendation to concerned office, officer, and cooperatives in our municipality which was embodied in Resolution Number 297, adapted November 11, 2025, entitled "A Resolution Congratulating and Commending the Municipal Cooperative Development Council" or MCDC, Mr. J.L. Hejos, and the outstanding cooperatives of the municipality of Palomolo for their exemplary achievements and recognitions during the Cooperative Development Authority or CDA Region 12 Gawad Parangal held on October 22, 2025 in the city of Coronadal, South Cotobato. Whereas the Sangguningang Bayan of Palomolo takes immense pride in honoring the exceptional achievements of local cooperatives and public servants who continue to uphold the spirit of cooperativism, excellence, and community empowerment. Whereas the Cooperative Development Authority or CDA Gawad Parangal is a prestigious annual recognition program established to honor cooperatives, cooperative development officers, and partners for their significant contributions to the cooperative sector in the Philippines, recognizing exemplary performance, best practices, and good governance within the cooperative movement. Whereas during the Cooperative Development Authority, the CDA Region 12 Gawad Parangal held on October 22, 2025 in the city of Coronadal, South Cotobato, the following cooperatives, organizations, and individuals from the municipality of Palomolo who recognize for their outstanding performance and invaluable contributions to the growth and success of the cooperative movement in Region 12 to with Municipal Cooperative Development Council or MCDC of Palomolo. The award is Exemplary Cooperative Development Council Award. Mr. J.L. Hejos Municipal Cooperative Development Officer has distinguished service award, one of the 11 outstanding awardees in Region 12. Dole Community Multipurpose Cooperative. Excellence in Net Surplus Award Without Branch Category, Top 1. Billionaire Circle Cooperative Award. Tibud sa katibawasan, Multipurpose Cooperative. Excellence in Membership Growth Award with Branch Category, Top 3. Excellence in Net Surplus Award Without Branch Category, Top 3. County Recite Credit Cooperative. Excellent Excellence in Membership Growth Award Without Branch, Top 1. Palomolo Teachers Multipurpose Cooperative. Outstanding Capital Growth Award, Micro Cooperative Category, Top 2. Whereas these recognitions stand as a testament to the unwavering dedication, hard work, and integrity of the awardees who continue to embody the true essence of cooperativism and serve as shining examples of good governance and community empowerment. Wherefore premises considered upon motion of SB Member John Edward Lumayag and on unanimous sponsorship, the body resolved, as it is served by the sole, to congratulate and commend the Municipal Development Council. Mr. J.L. Hejos and the outstanding cooperatives of the municipality of Palomolo for their exemplary achievements and recognitions during the Cooperative Development Authority Region 12 Gawad Parangal held on October 22, 2025 in the city of Coronadal, South Cotobato. Restored further to furnish copies of this resolution to the Municipal Development Council, Mr. J. Hejos, and all the awardee cooperatives as well as other concerned offices as a token of recognition and esteem from the Sangguningang Bayan of Palomolo. Unanimously carried, adopted by the Sangguningang Bayan on November 11, 2025, certified to be to the correctness of the foregoing resolution signed by yours truly, the Sangguningang Bayan Secretary, attested and certified to be duly adapted, signed Flores Banzuelo Carlos Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. May we now request the awardees to please come in front to receive the respective awards.
And I call all the members of the Sangguningang Bayan to be here in front.
Alright, so we will now have this resolution for the Municipal Cooperative Development Council of Palomolo headed by Sir June... Ah, with the members of the council, please. Requesting the members of the August body, please. Next in line would be for Mr. J.L. Hejos. Oh lahat, lahat nalang po, and dito na silang lahat. And we would also like to call on the Dole Community Multipurpose Cooperative, Tibud sa Katibawasan, and County Recite Credit Cooperative as well as the Palomolo Teachers Multipurpose Cooperative.
Again, the awardees are the following. The MCDC of Palomolo Exemplary Cooperative Development Council Award, Mr. J.L. Hejos Municipal Cooperative Development Officer Distinguished Service Award, one of the 11 outstanding awardees in Region 12, the Dole Community Multipurpose Cooperative or DECO. Excellent Excellence in Net Surplus Award Without Branch, Top 1. Billionaire Circle Cooperative Award. And the Tibud sa Katibawasan, Multipurpose Cooperative. Excellence in Membership Growth Award with Branch Category, Top 3. Excellence in Net Surplus Award with Branch Category, Top 3. And then the County Recite Credit Cooperative. Excellence in Membership Growth Award Without Branch Category, Top 1. And Palomolo Teachers Multipurpose Cooperative Outstanding Capital Growth Award, Micro Cooperative Category, Top 2. And congratulations to the winners. Godspeed.
Okay, sec, we will proceed. Our next order of business.
For... For the first reading and the fairer of proposed measures or communications. Number one, we have a letter from our municipal mayor dated November 2025, addressed to the honorable members of the Sangguningang Bayan through Honorable Flores Banzuelo Carlos, Municipal Vice Mayor, Presiding Officer. Gentlemen and ladies, in line with our continuing efforts to strengthen institutional partnerships that support student development, promote career readiness, and provide meaningful practical learning experiences for both senior high and college learners, may we respectfully request the honorable members of the Sangguningang Bayan for the urgent passage of the following resolutions. A resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, to enter into and sign a MOA with the various schools of the municipality for the work immersion opportunities of senior high school students and on the job or OGT training of college students for school year 2025 to 2026. In support of this, attached with is a copy of the approved 2024 resolution for your reference in public service, signed Honorable Bernie De Palencia, Municipal Mayor.
Okay, so we will take this as one of the urgent measure.
Letter B is also a letter from the municipal mayor on the same date, addressed to this August body through the Honorable Vice Mayor. Gentlemen and ladies, greetings. Respectfully requesting the honorable members of the Sangguningang Bayan for the urgent passage of the following resolutions. A resolution authorizing Honorable Bernie De Palencia to sign a MOA for the provision of seed money, financial aid amounting to 7,000 pesos per cluster for the Christmas dance competition as part of the Family Day celebration on December 19, 2025. In support of this request, attached are copies of the MOA for your perusal consideration and approval in public service, signed by our municipal mayor.
In the communication sec, the mayor's office did not mention if how many participant will be given.
It is not mentioned in the letter, Mr. Presiding, but only the amount of 7,000 per cluster, but no exact number of the clusters are mentioned.
So, can you forward that to the chairman of the Committee on Budget and Appropriation?
I noted, noted, Mr. Presiding. And letter C is a letter dated November 21, 2025, addressed to this August body through the Honorable Vice Mayor. Gentlemen and ladies, respectfully endorse for the consideration of the Honorable Sangguningang Bayan is the request for the issuance of an authority to the municipality of Palomolo to negotiate and enter into a loan agreement with the Development Bank of the Philippines or DBP. The said authority is being sought to enable the municipality to secure financial assistance for the implementation of the following priority development projects. 100, 100 million pesos. Housing for PH project. 60 million. Steel parking building project. 40 million pesos. Service vehicle acquisition project. 25 million pesos. Solar panel installation for the municipal building. 25 million pesos. Construction of the fourth floor private rooms at the Palomolo Government Hospital. In view of the foregoing, may we respectfully request the honorable bodies a favorable consideration and approval of the requested authority. Thank you for your continued support and unwavering commitment to the development programs of our municipality in public service, signed by our municipal mayor.
So, we will take this as in committee of the whole. So, we will take this as in committee of the whole.
Okay noted, Mr. Presiding. And for number two, we have an endorsement from the Office of Municipal Planning and Development Coordinator dated November 19, 2025, forwarding to this body through the Committee on Housing, Land Utilization, Zoning, Urban Planning, Public Works and Utilities, the Huron Local Zoning Review Committee, LZRZ, on the following resolutions. For approval on the request of DARPC for the reclassification of the following lots that are listed below from agricultural zone to agri-industrial zone with a total area of 150,000 square meters, located at Barangay Crossing, Palkan, Palomolok, South Cotabato. Lot 309, 3009A, 80,011 square meters. Lot 3010A, 21,112 square meters. Lot C, Lot 3004A, 28,655 square meters. D, Lot 3005A, 20,222 square meters. Number two, for approval of the heirs of Yusebio, demand type for the reclassification of lot number 8,000-B-2 PSD11-017011 with transfer certificate number T-40116 from agri-zone to residential zone containing an area of 24,683 square meters at Porok Kichanova, Barangay Populacion, Palomolok, South Cotabato. Attached here too is the copy of the LZRZ minutes of the meeting and resolutions for your appropriate action, signed by Engineer Dominio Dosica Migi Jr., OIC MPDC.
Okay, so forward this communication to the Committee on Housing, Land Utilization, Zoning, Urban Planning, Public Works and Utilities, chaired by Honorable Billy Bert Baitos. Ah, the two subject, ah, sec.
Yes, okay noted, noted, Mr. Presiding.
The Committee on Rules.
Yes, ah, rules will be the support committee, the lead committee is that of the Committee of Counselor Baitos. Okay, number three is the application for accreditation of the following NGOs. Casilac Development Foundation Incorporated, Noronisa Indigenous Farmers Integrated Association, and the Municipal Composing Facility Rural Improvement Club Livelihood Association.
So, forward this communication to the Committee on Cooperative and Association and Livelihood, chaired by Honorable John Edward Lumayag.
Okay noted, Mr. Presiding. And number four is a resolution authored by Counselor Legaya Orbisido, enacting an ordinance providing rules and guidelines for the orderly and safe operation of the municipal children's playground, imposing penalties for violations thereof in the municipality of Palomolok Province of South Cotabato, and appropriating funds thereof, as well as the ordinance to the effect.
So, again, forward this to Chairman of the Committee on Rules.
Okay noted, noted, Mr. Presiding. And next is a resolution authored by Counselor John Edward Lumayag, congratulating and commending Ms. Chantel M. Sabarutin, CPA, Ipataba Po Scholar from 2021 to 2025, and a resident of Barangay Magsay Say for successfully passing the October 2025 licensure examination for certified public accountants.
We will take this as an urgent measure.
Okay noted, Mr. Presiding. And number six is a letter from the barangay officials of Lamkalya of this municipality, addressed to Honorable Vice Mayor Flores Banzuelo Carlos. To Honorable Flores Banzuelo Carlos, Vice Mayor, copy furnished all honorable members of the Sangguniyang Bayan, Municipality of Palomolok. Greetings, we, the barangay officials of Barangay Lamkalya, Palomolok, South Cotabato, respectfully submit this letter to you good office to secure time, guidance, and appropriate assistance regarding several concerns and inquiries affecting the current operations, governance, and project implementation within our barangay. We believe that this matter significantly impact service delivery and the welfare of our constituents. Thus, we are elevating them to the Sangguniyang Bayan for proper action and intervention. Below are issues and concerns we respectfully bring to your attention. Number one, unauthorized switching or alteration of approved project implementations. Number two, lack of transparency in various barangay transactions and processes. Number three, alleged forgery involving official documents. Number four, receiving labor compensation in cash without proper reporting to the Sangguniyang barangay members. Number five, cancellation of scheduled regular sessions due to the unavailability of the punong barangay despite the presence of a quorum. Number six, implementation of projects without prior consultation with the respective committee chairpersons. Number seven, substandard quality of certain projects. Number eight, unusually large amounts listed as refundable under the punong barangay. Number nine, issues concerning the use of and management of barangay transportation assets. Number ten, SK budget issue. The punong barangay continues to urge the Sangguniyang Kabataan to allocate part of its limited 10% SK fund to cover the shortfall of the barangay's socio-cultural budget. She also insists that the SK allocate funds for the restoration of the gym flooring despite the fact that the SK budget is not intended for infrastructure projects and such allocation is not allowed under existing guidelines. Number eleven, operation of a business within the barangay premises where income is received personally despite the use of barangay electricity and resources. In light of the above, we earnestly request Honorable Vice Mayor and the Sangguniyang Bayan to look into these matters and provide appropriate action, guidance, or investigation as may be necessary. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. We remain committed to upholding transparency, accountability, and god governance for the benefit of our community. Respectfully yours, signed. Honorable Anita Ladrán, Committee on Peace and Order. Honorable Merlita Takbas, Committee on Management, Solid Waste Management. Honorable Lito Ampo, Committee on Finance and Appropriations. Honorable Perlita Gina Lugon, Committee on Health. Honorable Giovanni Caldo, Committee on Infrastructure. And Committee, Honorable Jason A. Loberas, SK Chairperson. That's all, Mr. Presiding.
Committee of the whole, to take this matter.
Okay noted, Mr. Presiding. And the number seven is calendar year 2025 General Fund Supplemental Budget Number One of Barangay Lumakil. And lastly, we have the copy of Trial Balance of Special Education Fund as of October 31, 2025.
For number seven to the Committee on Finance. And number eight is for information, Mr. President.
Okay noted, Mr. Presiding. And for the committee reports.
Mr. Chair. Yes, ah, I would like to manifest that in item number four, we will, if... I would like to include the Committee on Children, Family and Children.
Okay.
Family and Children.
Rules and Family and Children.
So, this measure is referred to the Committee on Rules in association with the Committee on Family and Children's Welfare. So, the lead committee will be the Rules, Mr. President.
Next, sec.
For the committee reports, again, we have only one report calendar this morning. And this is the third committee report of the Committee on Women, Family, Children's Welfare, and Gender Equality. Subject Communication from the Office of Municipal Mayor dated November 12, 2025, respectfully requesting the honorable members of the Sangguniyang Bayan for the passage of resolution authorizing our municipal mayor to enter into a partnership agreement with the Commission on Population and Development, or CPD, Region 12, and to sign other documents related thereto. This collaboration between the CPD, Region 12, and the LGO Palomolok aims to improve the policy and program environment of the local level to ensure universal access to responsible parenthood and family planning information and services, especially among the marginalized sectors.
Honorable, ah, Orbisido, for your report.
Morning, Mr. Presiding Officer, and to my colleagues in this August hall. This is a committee report coming from the Committee on Women, Family, Children's Welfare, and Gender Equality. A letter request coming from the local chief executive. Our subject respectfully requesting the honorable members of the Sangguniyang Bayan for the passage of a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, to enter into a partnership agreement with the Commission on Population and Development, or CPD, Region 12, and to sign other documents related thereto. Facts and findings, the above measure was referred to the Huron Committee for Proper Action. Number two is the committee concerned held the meeting on November 20, 2025 for the consideration of the above measure. In attendance were the respective chairperson, the committee members, and the representative from Municipal Health Office, Ms. Vivian Agarcio. Number three, the following were discussed during the said committee meeting. The Commission on Population and Development, or CPD, coordinates, plans, monitors, and formulate population-related programs to enhance the effective delivery of population management services in the municipality of Palomolok. The partnership outlines the roles, responsibilities, and collaborative efforts necessary for the successful implementation of the local population programs within the municipality. The objectives of this ordinance aims to, we also discussed the objectives, and this aims to responsible parenthood, family planning, improve the health and well-being of adolescent, build the capacities of the local government units on population management, and ensure the implementation of national population and developmental laws and policies. All members of the committees were supportive, and everyone had given his or her intent of support for the partnership program. So, the recommendations to adopt this committee report to pass a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, to enter into a partnership agreement with the Commission on Population and Development, or CPD, Region 12, and to sign other documents related thereto, and to consider this matter as one of the urgent measures into this session. So, I move, Mr. Presiding.
So, third committee report is shared by adopted, and be taken as urgent in the decision.
Okay noted, Mr. Presiding. And for the calendar of business, unfinished business, we have none, business for the day. Second reading for our urgent matters, we have three items considered urgent. First of which is the request of our municipal mayor for the urgent passage of a resolution authorizing our local chief executive, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, to enter into and sign a MOA with the various schools of the municipality for the work immersion opportunities of senior high school students and on-the-job training or OGT college students for school year 2025, 2026. And attached to the letter of the mayor is the resolution of the same tenor which the Sangguniyang Bayan adopted during last year on this matter also, Mr. Presiding.
Honorable Orbisido.
Again, thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. Considering that we already started the immersion program, and there are a number of our students doing their immersion requirement in the municipality of Palomolok and also the OGT, I suppose there is a need for this resolution to be approved by now. So, I'm moving for the approval of the said measure.
So, there's a motion for the approval, seconded by Honorable Salada and other members of the Sangguniyang Bayan. Said, ah, resolution is served by approve.
On unanimous sponsorship.
On unanimous sponsorship.
Okay, noted, Mr. Presiding. And the next urgent is the resolution authored by Counselor John Edward Lumayag, congratulating and commending Ms. Chantel M. Sabarutin, CPA, CTT CB, Apataba Po Scholar from 2021 to 2025, and a resident of Barangay Magsay Say for successfully passing the October 2025 licensure examination for certified public accountants.
Okay, Honorable John.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding. Before my resolution, I would like to thank the committee chair on rules for giving consideration for the last time na ma-accepto sa agenda. Thank you very much, Counselor Salada. And for my motion, I move to pass a resolution congratulating and commending Ms. Chantel Sabarutin, CPA, at Apataba Po Scholar from 2021 to 2025, and a resident of Barangay Magsay Say for successfully passing the October 2025 licensure examination for certified public accountants.
Okay, see, there's a motion for...
This is on unanimous sponsorship as well. Thank you, Mr. Presiding.
Said motion is served by approve. In unanimous sponsorship.
Okay noted, that will be on unanimous sponsorship. And for the number three urgent is the report of the Committee on Women, Family, Children's Welfare, and Gender Equality, covering the request of our municipal mayor for the passage of a resolution authorizing our local chief executive to enter into a partnership agreement with the Commission on Population and Development, or CPD, Region 12, and to sign other documents related thereto. This collaboration between the CPD, Region 12, and the LGO Palomolok aims to improve the policy and program environment of the local level to ensure universal access to responsible parenthood and family planning information and services, especially among the marginalized sectors.
Okay, Honorable Orbisido.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. I would like to inform the body that this agreement is ministerial on our part to act on this because this has been to be renewed every term, as I was informed. Everyone is provided a copy of this measure, and if there is no question on it... Okay. I am moving now for the approval of a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Bernie De Palencia, to enter into a partnership agreement with the Commission on Population and Development, Region 12, and to sign other documents related thereto. And to have all members of the committee, or all members present into this session shall be the co-sponsors.
Okay, so there's a motion for the approval of that resolution, seconded by all the members present, and take note for the manifestation of the chairman of the Committee on Women. So, said resolution is served by approve.
And for the scheduled second reading, we have none, third and final reading none, and assigned business none. Let's go now to the announcement.
Sir Presiding.
Honorable Orbisido.
Okay, finally, I have in my hand the hard copy of of the concern of our PCL officers. Date November 18. To all PCL, South Cotabato Federated Officers, Counselors, Associates, Honorable Members, Vice Mayors, Secretarian Staff. Subject, PCL SCF Year End Evaluation. We cordially invite you to attend the 2025 PCL SCF Year End Evaluation. Below are the details for the said evaluation. Date, although it is stated here, November 30 to December 2, December 1 and 2, time 8, then venue Grand Mancing Hotel, Davao City.
I have here the details as informed. For November thirty, it will only, November thirty will be for the B O D. We will have our meeting before one, and our registration will be until four P M. December one, this concerns everyone. December one, for councilors, this is a Monday. You are hereby informed that by eleven o'clock of December one, you can avail of your hotel accommodation. December one, eleven, uh, eleven E M, registration will start at four P M. And December two, that is a Tuesday, we will have our breakfast, and after that, go home na tayo. And required attire, my requirement to attire. P C L T-shirt that was uh, used or provided to us during the P C L election. So, I hope everybody. I will check on that. So, P C L T-shirt during the election, given during the election, and in the plenary and year-end program, everyone is required, no one is required, encouraged to wear Hawaiian-inspired costume. So, sa evening of December one, plenary and year-end evaluation party, Hawaiian-inspired attire or floral. Okay, dali lang yun, o bulaklakan. Okay. Take charge, only staff registered can be accommodated in the plenary hall. I kani eklaro lang, vice. We will discuss this after the, all details or clarifications, we will discuss after the adjournment. Thank you.
Since we have a P C L, our session will be moved on December four, if, okay, Thursday, Thursday? Is everybody agreeable, December four?
Suggestion, December four, next session. Okay, Thursday?
No objection.
No objection? Okay, thank you. No suggestion, carried. Next session, December four.
Okay, there's also an announcement here, Mr. Presiding, the invitation of the D I L G for the members to attend the Enabling Environment for Urban Climate Action at the National and Local Level, scheduled November twenty-eighth in Manila. Uh, they might be, you might be interested. They might be interested, Mr. Presiding. D I L G, um, invitation for the Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Five Planners Forum, Enabling Environment for Urban Climate Action at the National and Local Level. Ang venue is appeal sa councilors, may interested. Hmm, November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five in Metro Manila. L G officials and other functionaries who are licensed environmental planners are also invited to participate.
Uh, Honorable Presiding, I would like to announce that we will have a, having a joint committee meeting on land use and rules tomorrow, eight o'clock in the morning. Uh, pwidita, nag-request si Councilor Falcon na nine o'clock na lang daw in the morning. So, nine, that's nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay, pa-announce na lang sa ponis, uh, G C.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Presiding.
Okay, na, I now declare this, uh, twenty twenty-eight regular session adjourned. Honorable, Honorable, uh, Juar Falcon, for the parking, for a year.
Jesus Christ, my Father, who come before you at the close of this heaven with grateful hearts. Thank you for guiding our discussions and for allowing us to fulfill our duties as public servants entrusted with the welfare of our community. We praise you for the wisdom, understanding, and humility you have bestowed upon us today. May the decisions we have made and the resolutions we have passed serve the best interest of our constituents and bring about positive change in our municipality. Lord, continue to bless each one of us. Grant us integrity in our purpose, compassion in our service, and strength to face the challenges ahead. Protect our families and keep our community safe and peaceful and progressive.